Good evening, everyone. We're ready to begin tonight's Planning Commission meeting, and I call it to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. Excuse me. We're live on KCLV Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call roll?
Chair Moody?
Here.
Vice Chair Schlotman?
Present.
Commissioner Quinn? Excused Commissioner Flengus? Excused Commissioner Trowbridge?
Here.
Commissioner Creer? Excused Commissioner Cherry?
Here.
We have a quorum of four.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate your adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before we start, just to let you know, because there's only four of you, and there are GPAs on this meeting, GPAs require a supermajority, meaning five of you would have to approve of it in the affirmative. So, any applicant who's here for a GPA, even if you all four voted for approval, it would go as a denial, since you don't have a supermajority today.
All right. And do we know for sure that Commissioner Creer and Commissioner Flengus will not be here tonight? I know that Commissioner Quinn, I knew she wasn't going to be in attendance.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that.
Okay. I guess we can check on that. So...
If you want, you may want to hold at least Item 14, or at least trail it, and the related items to that, and any other GPA that may be early in the meeting, just to give those commissioners a few moments to get here.
Okay, very good. When will do that? Okay, moving to Item 4. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion, as well as the amount of any time, any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. All comments made under this item for specific action items will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak during this portion of tonight's agenda? Okay? So, are you here to speak on specific items?
Yes, we're...
If you're going to speak, I need you to come up to the microphone so we can make this part of tonight's record.
Well, I'm an applicant...
Will you state your name and address, please?
Cynthia Mota, 1801 Cochran Street, Las Vegas, 89104.
Okay.
I'm one of the applicants on Item 29.
We'll call that item in the regular course tonight.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak during this portion of tonight's agenda? If you're here for a specific item, that item will be called, and you'll be given an opportunity to speak on that. Thank you. We'll move on to Item 5. These are housekeeping items. Are there any items that commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Mr. Chairman, Items 18, 19, 20, 21, and 22, VAR 66443, SUP 66444, SUP 66445, SUP 66446, and SDR 66447. The applicant has requested to hold this in abeyance to the December 13th Planning Commission meeting. Items 26 and 27, VAR 66657, SDR 66658. The applicant has requested that item is being held to the December 13th Planning Commission, as well as Item Number 38, SUP 66806. The applicant has requested that item also be held in abeyance to the December 13th Planning Commission meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone wish to speak on Items 18 through 22, 26 and 27, or Item 38? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Adam Shepherd. My address is 6797 Bristol Falls Street, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89149. In regards to Items 18 through 22, I have been, I came to the last meeting, and I came to this meeting as well having to drive all the way down from Hoalapai in 215, up near, you know, almost near Mount Charleston. I was not properly notified of any meeting to begin with. No cards, nothing from the developer, nothing from the council. The only reason why I knew about the previous meeting was because of the sign on the corner, and I barely managed to catch that before the item. It's been taxing to have to drive back and forth up here if they want to keep putting it in abeyance. The other item I would wish to bring up just here on point is Number 18, asking for the tavern. I looked over the maps, and it requires a 1,500-foot buffer from any protected zone, church, house of worship, school, park, things like that. Your notification map actually has a, actually shows within the 15-foot buffer, 1,500-foot buffer, that Centennial High School is actually within that 1,500 feet. So, I believe that that one, there's no need to obey it. It should be denied, as is, since they have not asked for the variance. That particular waiver to allow the variance to put it there.
Okay, thank you. Was there someone else who wished to speak?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Since there's a motion to obey these items, I'm assuming these comments will be transferred to that agenda at which these are going to be heard?
That's my hope. I mean, it's difficult to know what's going to be said until they come up, but it seems to me like, yeah, this gentleman's comments will be made a part of the record, so that that can be considered if this item, if these items are obeyed, so that we don't need you to come back next time. I appreciate the city attorney's input on that. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Kalana Sue Dixon. I live at 1810 Willow Trail. This is referring to Number 26. Basically, I live directly behind this particular property, and, once again, the kind of same thing, didn't know about the meeting, did nothing, and I don't drive directly in front of this property, so I didn't know about it until a neighbor pointed it out and goes, "By the way, tomorrow night, there's a meeting." And I go, "What?" And so, I drove by and had to get all the information off the sign, and so, the last night, I'm struggling to find anybody else that's willing to even come. And so, I did find Donna, which is also the other side of this same property. I'm right here, she's this side of the property, I'm this side of the property. Once again, she didn't know anything, because those are her apartments that she does. And so, neither one of us, we're the only two here, because we're the only two that actually figured out that this was going to happen. And the bottom line is, is he's wanting to change some stuff that isn't on the original. He wants to go from 11 spaces, from 22 down to 11, and, you know, we're kind of concerned, because at this point, the fence line that was there is all gone, because he's already cleared out the property and stuff. And I've lived with no fence in the backyard for like, forever, since he's cleared it all out. And it's been, you know, a long time, and I'm kind of going, "When's he going to put up a fence?" That was part of the whole thing, is he was going to put a fence back up, separating my property from now that he's desert this behind me, which is his property.
So, could I ask you something?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Do you have any problem if this item's obeyed coming back to the December 13th Planning Commission meeting next month?
December 13th? Is it going to be in the same time, and stuff like that? Because I literally like ran, obviously, straight from work. You know, I'm like, "I gotta go, you guys," because at this point, this affects my backyard. This affects my property.
So, we haven't voted on the abeyance yet, but if the vote is in favor of that abeyance, it would be next month, December 13, 2016, same time, same place?
Okay. So, is it guaranteed to be that date, so I can just write it down now and pencil it in? Or is somebody going to notify me this time, or am I going to like be missed? Because we did have apartments, literally, down the street that we spent three years saying, "No, no, no." We had enough people to say, "No, no, no." And then, it went away, and then now, all the apartments are being built there, because we didn't go to a few of these meetings that we never found out about.
I'll let the Director answer your comment about, or your question about whether or not it's guaranteed to go next month.
Mr. Chairman, this qualifies as the public notification of the meeting to be heard in December 13, and it would be at 6:00 p.m. the meeting would start. This would be part of the public hearing items, and would be closer to the beginning portion of the public hearing, portion of the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, does anyone else wish to be heard? Seeing none, Commissioner Schlotman, your motion on the housekeeping items?
Yes, Chairman, on Items 18 through 22, 26 and 27, and also Number 38, I would make a motion to hold these items in abeyance till the December 13, 2016 Planning Commission hearing.
Okay. Motion is made to obey those items till next month. Please vote. We are now to the one-motion-one-vote portion of the agenda. The following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application, or a member of the public, or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions, and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff, should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Item 6 is TMP 65809. This was remanded to the Planning Commission. The applicant is 95 Management LLC, and the owner is Section 12 LLC. For possible action on a request for a tentative map for a 66 lot family subdivision at the northwest corner of Eagle Canyon Avenue and Egan Crest Drive in Ward 6, staff recommends approval. Item 7, VAR 66741. The applicant is Ralph Servito. The owner is Ralph Servito Family Trust. For possible action on a request for a variance, to allow a 10-foot corner side yard setback where 15 feet is required for an existing accessory structure, Class 2, detached patio cover at 7703 Calmwater Street in Ward 6, staff recommends approval. Items 8 and 9 are related. Item 8 is SUP 66792. The applicant owner is Southern Nevada Sightless Incorporated. For possible action on a request for a major amendment to a previously approved special use permit, SUP 61367, for an alternative parking standard to allow 96 parking spaces where 166 spaces are required, at 997 North Brew Street and 1600 Gregson Avenue in Ward 5, staff recommends approval. Item 9 is SDR 66794, for possible action on a request for a major amendment to a previously approved site development plan review, SDR 60891, for a proposed 3,400-square-foot interior office addition to an existing warehouse, office, and banquet facility in Ward 5, staff recommends approval. Item 10 is SUP 66648. The applicant is Sunyuk NA. The owner is Repai Las Vegas Modiceto LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a beer wine cooler on sale establishment within a proposed 2,640-square-foot restaurant at 6640 North Durango Drive and Suite, North Durango Drive, Suite 180 in Ward 6, staff recommends approval. Item 11, SUP 66822. The applicant is Celebrity Brands LLC, and the owner is Great Wash Park LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a beer wine cooler on sale establishment in a proposed restaurant with 6,355 square feet of indoor seating and 204 square feet of outdoor seating, with a 141-foot distance separation from a city park where 400 feet is required, at 330 South Rampart Boulevard, Suite 160 in Ward 2, staff recommends approval. Item 12, SDR 66779. The applicant is Somerset Academy. The owner is Section 12 LLC. For possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 54,000 square-foot public or private school primary on the west side of Shamba Road alignment north of Grand Teton Drive in Ward 6, staff recommends approval. And Item 13, SDR 66808. The applicant is Simonseer Carp 7 LLC, and the owner is Mary Bartz's 22 LLC. For possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 7,428 square-foot auto parts new and rebuilt retail store with waivers of the downtown Centennial Plan setback, architectural design, and screening standards at 2,100 Fremont Street in Ward 3, staff recommends approval. We hear from staff? Public Works?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have a few condition changes on Item Number 12, and I could read, they've been submitted to city clerks, and I'll read them in at this point. On Condition Number 8, adding a few sentences, additionally grant a minimum eight-foot-wide public roadway easement for a future pickup and drop-off lane acceptable to the city traffic engineer on Shamba Road adjacent to this site on the final map for this site, which is an FMP 66249. The city may accept this easement by separate document if FMP 66249 will not record prior to the issuance of permits for this site. We'd like to delete Condition Number 10, as well as Item 12, and on Condition Number 16, we'd like to add the following to Condition 16. If it is determined through traffic study updates that an additional parking lane is warranted, the applicant and/or property owner shall construct this parking lane within 180 days of written notice from the city traffic engineer. Failure to comply may result in code enforcement action or any other remedy legally available to the city, including the city constructing the required improvements and billing/assessing the applicant and/or property owner for reimbursement of all costs associated with this improvement, including collection and/or legal costs. If it is determined that the parking lane is not required with this site, the city shall retain the required public roadway easement for potential future construction of the parking lane by the city in the future.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here on Item 12?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, Bob Gronauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing the applicant in this matter, and we are in acceptance of those conditions.
Okay, thank you very much. These are public hearing items. Do any members of the public, I'll open the public hearing. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on any of these items? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Any discussion on the Planning Commission? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on Items 6 through 13, I've moved to approve, subject to the conditions of, as written to the record by Lucian with Public Works on Item Number 12, and disclosure that I live within the notification area of Item Number 13, but this will have no greater or lesser effect on myself than anyone else, so I'll be voting on that matter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The motion is to approve Items 6 through 13 with the amended and deleted conditions on Item 12. Motion carries?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item Number 6 will be, is final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within seven days. Items 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12 are final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days, and Item Number 13 will be heard by the city council on December 21, 2016.
Thank you. I am pulling Item 41 under Director's Business forward at this time. This is DIR 67066. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas. For discussion and possible action on a presentation of the Southern Nevada Sustainable Systems Inventory. This affects all wards. Staff recommends approval. Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, for the record, I'm Mark Velada, City of Las Vegas, Long Range Planning and Office of Sustainability. I'm here tonight to present to you Sustainability Atlas that the city and regional stakeholders, primarily our partners at the UNLV Downtown Design Center, have collaborated on over the past two years. As you know, the city has been a leader in sustainability because of policies established by the mayor and city council that are reflected in our citywide master plan and plans like the downtown Las Vegas Master Plan. And we have many tangible examples of that commitment. Water conservation projects, recycling, lead buildings like this one, and then perhaps most noticeably, renewable energy. Next month, a solar plant outside of Boulder City will be ready for commercial operation, and with our partnership with NV Energy, 100% of the city's retail load will be served by renewable energy, making us the first large municipality to do so. We've also received a lot of national recognition and awards for these efforts. A few months ago, the city received an innovation award from the International City County Managers' Association for our green efforts. However, the city isn't always renowned for being green and sustainable. The public often sees Las Vegas, of course, as a resort city and entertainment destination. The city, along with a number of community partners and stakeholders, helped fund the Southern Nevada Sustainable Systems Inventory, or Sustainability Atlas, a project driven that helps provide insight on how Southern Nevada and the region as a whole is sustainable. And the inventory is a compendium of maps, infographics, and supported by narrative that shows sustainability in Southern Nevada's Mojave ecosystem, its economy, and its community of specific systems, broken down into water, transportation, energy, food, waste, and pollution. And this was done to determine vulnerabilities to our community that should a system be shocked or stressed, and interdependencies between systems. It also allows for comparisons between different geographic scales and between different public and private actors. Data was provided by regional stakeholders like RTC, SNWA, but many of the graphics mapping and research was completed by UNLV Downtown Design Center grad and undergrad students, as well as support from City of Las Vegas planning staff. Ultimately, having this inventory as a tool for us to better share, better understand our sustainable region and share our sustainability story with the public. But most importantly, it can be used in the planning process for us to better understand and plan for how we can protect the environment, diversify the economy, and improve overall community quality of life. So, the slides that follow here are excerpts from each chapter that will give you an idea of the contents and help you, give you a brief, high-level overview of sustainability in Southern Nevada. So, the inventory begins with an overview of Southern Nevada's population, and as you know, Southern Nevada has been one of the fastest-growing regions in the U.S. and has been faced with a number of challenges. By 2045, we're projected to have 3 million residents in our valley, in addition to all the visitation that we get. From a planning standpoint, it's key to understand how things like our changing racial makeup and increasing racial diversity influences other demographic indicators like educational attainment or median household income. The spatial aspects of demographics are especially important because of how they can influence systems like transportation or food. Water is clearly a big part of our story, and while many look at Las Vegas' growth and water use at casinos, golf courses, and fountains as the cause of declining water levels at Lake Mead, the fact is that we use less than 2% of the Colorado River water, and the resort industry uses about 7% of all water used in our community. In fact, most Colorado River water is used in California and Arizona, allocated primarily to agricultural use, something that we don't have a lot of in Southern Nevada, with maybe the exception of the Virgin Valley and Mooppa Valley. Thanks to Southern Nevada Water Authority's innovative water conservation programs, businesses and residents in our community have reduced water consumption more than 40 billion gallons during a time when we added half a million in population to the region. The transportation chapter is broken down between freight and passenger movement. More than a third of inbound freight flow from Southern Nevada comes from California, and the vast majority, that's from the LA area. We've had disruptions and anecdotal stories of disruption between Southern California. A major wreck can cause a bottleneck, but a wildfire at Cajon Pass can wreak havoc. So, what would happen if we had a multi-day disruption, which trains couldn't come over the pass because of an earthquake? Or if Southern Nevada's fuel supply was shut down due to a train derailment in San Bernardino, as happened in the early 90s? The bottom line is, we rely heavily on the I-15 corridor, but upgrading the 93-95 corridor to interstate standards as I-11 definitely could change the transportation dynamic for our region. From a passenger and modal standpoint, we know that we're far too dependent on the automobile as a nation and as a region, and traffic congestion causes delays as well as pollution. We also know that our land use patterns tie directly into auto dependency. Multimodal transportation that's spoken of in our plans are approaches that can, with approaches like that consider bikes, pedestrians, buses, light rail transit can alleviate job housing imbalances. And that's something that's definitely spoken to in the downtown master plan. As a state, Nevada and NV Energy especially have made tremendous investments in cleaner energy, thanks, and thanks in part to legislation made over the past couple legislative sessions. Nevada will eliminate coal from its portfolio and replace it with natural gas and renewable energy, which make up the lion's share of overall energy production in our state. The vast majority of energy does come from natural gas that's shipped in via pipeline from Wyoming, New Mexico, Utah, and central California. However, Nevada has an abundance of renewable resources, geothermal in central and northern Nevada can be transmitted down the transmission line along eastern Nevada, along US 93, while utility-scale solar plants around our region can similarly transmit loads back up north. So, approximately 20% of NV Energy's retail sales now come from a renewable energy source as a result of our state's renewable portfolio standard. The food chapter provides another great example of the interrelationships with other systems, and because we don't have a lot of local agriculture, 92% of all food in our region must be shipped here from, not only around the country, but from around the world. At a smaller scale, transportation is something that's important for the access of nutritious food, and it's especially important for those that are low-income, live in a food desert, or don't have convenient access to a full-service grocery store or food pantry. The waste chapter highlights a lot of the challenges and recent successes we've had with managing waste generated in Southern Nevada. The Apex landfill is about the same size as New York City's Fresh Kill landfill. The region's waste diversion rate was in the single digits in the 1990s, but over time, that's changed, and that's thanks to how resorts dispose of waste, how food and construction debris is handled. And with new recycling options that are provided by Republic Services of Southern Nevada and the completion of their expanded recycling center, we've made a dramatic turnaround. We will still dispose of three pounds more waste per household, but that's continuing to decline significantly, and we've dramatically increased our overall community recycling rate. Finally, the inventory provides an analysis of air, water, soil, and soil pollution, all of which can have harmful chronic impacts to human health. Again, we see how each system interacts with each other. Cleanup of sites such as the UP Railroad Yard right over here, or the BMI complex in Henderson, can not only remediate and clean soil and prevent pollution from reaching Lake Mead, but it also opens up the opportunity for new mixed-use commercial and residential developments like Symphony Park or Cadence. So, as you can see, we've had a lot of input from community stakeholders, and these accomplishments highlighted here and throughout the Atlas, the Sustainable Systems Inventory, are ones that we're working harder on sharing. City has been a leader, but clearly, there are other stakeholders like RTC, SNWA, and NV Energy that are playing a major role in sustainability for our region. And to continue momentum, we must continue to collaborate, plan, and implement to make a positive effect on quality of life for the future. And with that, thank you, and I'll be willing to take any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing item. Any members of the public wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment, open this for discussion on the Planning Commission. All right. Commissioner Cherry?
Through the chair. Thank you for the presentation. Is this going to be posted on the city's website for people to go to?
Yep. Right now, we presented a...
Right now, we presented a modified version of this presentation, but more or less the overall concept to Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition. We're working to try to get the document onto their website, and I can certainly follow up to see if we can find a location on our website. It is a pretty large file. It's currently on an FTP site that was included in the backup. But a more publicly facing location is something that we're definitely working on.
Wonderful. I believe we have a motion on this item. I'm prepared to make it if there is.
Yeah, there is a motion. There is a recommendation from staff, so is there... I don't know what the motion would be, so...
I see. No action required, actually. So we don't...
Very good.
Great.
We don't need a motion. I also want to thank you for your excellent presentation tonight. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
We are now back to the regular public hearing items. And items 14 through 17 are first up, but we're going to wait just a little bit to see if we happen to get another planning commissioner to show up, so we'll trail those items for a little bit. And that takes us to related items 23 through 25, beginning with item 23, which is MOD 66820. The applicant owner is Prometheus and Atlas Real Estate Development, LLC. For possible action on a request for a major modification of the Lone Mountain West Land Use Plan from L, Low Density Residential, to ML, Medium Low Density Residential, on the north side of Buckskin Avenue, west of Cliff Shadows Parkway in Ward 4. Staff recommends denial. Item 23 is VAR 66821, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a proposed four-story, 64-foot-tall building where two stories and 35 feet is the maximum allowed, to allow a site disturbance of 44% on slopes greater than 25%, where 35% is the maximum disturbance allowed, and to allow a 100% site disturbance on slopes between 15 and 25%, where 50% is the maximum disturbance allowed. Also in Ward 4, staff recommends denial. And item 25, SDR 66761, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 42-unit condominium development with waivers, to allow 16-foot retaining walls where 3 feet 6 inches is the maximum allowed, and to allow a 0-foot perimeter landscape buffer along the east and west property lines where 6 feet is required in Ward 4. Staff recommends denial. Could we please have the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing a 42-unit multifamily residential condominium development within the Lone Mountain West master plan area, and also subject to the hillside overlay district. The hillside overlay district is intended to encourage rural, large-lot, single-family development with a maximum recommended density of two units per acre, and that is designed to be compatible with the hillside terrain and environment. The proposed development is 8.4 units per acre, which would comply with the density allowed by the proposed major modification. The hillside overlay district is also intended to protect the natural topography and limits the amount of site disturbance allowed. A variance is being requested to exceed the limit with additional waivers of the Lone Mountain West Plan necessary to allow retaining walls up to 16 feet in height. A second variance is being requested to exceed the building height allowed by the proposed Lone Mountain West Land Use designation of ML, Medium Low Density Residential, and a waiver of landscaping requirements is also requested. Staff is recommending denial of all applications as the proposed development is too intense and does not comply with the requirements or intent of the Lone Mountain West Plan or the hillside overlay district. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, commissioners. Mr. Chair, Arnold Stock, 840 South Rancho Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89106, representing the owner. The name of this project would be, if approved, Cheyenne Buckskin Luxury Condominiums. It is proposed to be built on a premier site with panoramic and astounding views of the Las Vegas Valley. This development will include 42 individually-designed units ranging from two to four bedrooms, secured parking, all ungrade, with access to living units directly above. The development will include lavish landscape, a pool, spa, cabana, which is sited in a central courtyard. The individual living units will include custom and individualized interior designs, state-of-the-art kitchens, bathrooms, and master bedroom suites. As said just previously, it's 8.4 units per acre, a maximum height of 54 feet 6 inches. There are 26 two-bedrooms. The reason I'm talking about this, I'm talking about the unit size are large. 26 two-bedrooms at 1,522 square feet each, four two-bedrooms with loft and den at 1,860 square feet each, eight three-bedroom units at 1,810 square feet each, and four four-bedroom units at 2,612 square feet each. The original, as a side note, the original entitlement that was previously approved several years ago was for 30 single-family houses. There's 84 spaces required. We provided 90. We provided four handicap spaces, and two are required. As stated, there is a quest for a major modification for possible action of the Lone Mountain West Land Use Plan. The quest number two is for a variance, which was described, and number three is a site Although not required, I held a neighborhood meeting on the 20th of this month at the local Durangle Hills Community Center. There was three people in attendance. We sent out notifications of the 500-square-foot within the radius of the site. I sent out planning commission briefings, which I do on any entitlement requests that we have. I also met with Commissioner Flengus on this, and I've also met with Councilman Anthony three times. And I just, I want to note that we also completed our civil engineering plans, which was required because of the Lone Mountain modification, Lone Mountain Range Plan. So we had to finish all of our civil engineering plans. All of the grading was approved. All the engineering plans were approved by the city, and then it had to be approved by Clark County. So it's been a long process, several months, seven to be exact. And as far as the site plan is concerned, there's also an addition of the horse trail, which extends at the frontage of the site, which we respected. And the way that I described the site plan is the way it appears on this plan here. I'd be glad to answer any questions if there are any.
Okay. Thank you. These items have been noticed for a public hearing. Any members of the public who wish to be heard on any of these items, please come forward and state your name and address. Seeing none, I will close the public comment and open this for discussion among the planning
Through the chair.
Commissioner Cherry?
You know, with its proximity to the park and the zoning around it, and seeing the hillside to the, I believe, the west of it, I really don't have any issue with the project. I think there's a nice project being proposed here with some nice detail on the building. Normally, it'd be a difficult one for me to prove if this was closer to other residential or single-family, but I will be supporting this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me also just say, I think you've presented a stunning project. It's beautiful, considering, you know, it's bumped up right against this mountain, if you will, and on that outer boundary of our city. You're also going to see my support on this.
Thank you very much.
And with that, unless there are any more comments? Commissioner Trailbridge?
Are you ready for a motion?
Yes, please.
In regards to agenda item 23, Major Modification 66820, I'd make a motion to approve the request as presented, subject to all staff, if approved conditions.
Please vote. Motion carries.
In regards to item number 24, variance 66821, that's related to modification 66820, make a motion for approval, subject to all staff, as approved conditions.
Please vote. Motion also carries.
In regards to item number 25, Site Development Review, 66761, make a motion for approval, subject to all staff, if approved conditions.
Please vote. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items number 23, 24, and 25 will be heard at the December 21st, 2016 City Council meeting.
Thank you. Moving on to item 28, VAR 66689. The applicant owner is Winograd Yudka. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a three-foot side yard setback where five feet is required for a proposed home addition at 4609 Del Monte Avenue in Ward 1. Staff recommends denial. Staff report?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed room addition is composed of extending the home into the rear yard to accommodate a dual kitchen, as well as the expansion of the home into the required side yard setback for a proposed laundry room. Staff cannot support the expansion of the home into the required side yard setback as the request is purely preferential in nature and is self-imposed hardship. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Stan Popeck, GBS Construction, 3655 West Quayleve.
And I'm Yudka Winograd, 4609 Del Monte Avenue, Las Vegas, 89102.
What can you tell us about your project and why you think this commission should approve this?
Yes, when I went for the pre-application conference, we had all the details on the table, and I explained that all the utilities were in the corner of the house, and it makes it very cumbersome for the expansion. So from that point, we wanted to do the utility room for, obviously, more storage, convenience of the utilities, and it just was in the best interest of the property. I believe we're really enhancing the building, and it was just proportionally the right call to make. And at the conference, they seemed to be supportive and understanding. And so when we got the denial from the staff, I wasn't really sure. Of course, they talk about, you know, the articles and the amendments and how everything needs to be held as it is, but obviously, I think in this case, we have a very good cause for the variance.
Can I make a comment? Currently, my laundry room is between my kitchen and my dining room. You have to walk through the laundry room to get to the dining room, which narrows the walk space immensely. And the house, when I bought it two years ago, was, a lot of conversions were made, and this was the first house I ever bought. I was moving from California, so I can't say I probably spent enough time, but the garage had been converted to another room. So I don't have a garage for storage. I don't have a garage to put the laundry room in. So this would allow, and I also am kosher, and I don't know that you know much about that, but it means I separate milk and meat. Currently, I have storage shelves in my kitchen for my microwaves, for my food, my pantry, because there is minimal, there is one cabinet for pots and pans, there's a few cabinets for dishes. The pantry is so tiny, I can't fit hardly anything in there. So I was trying to come up with a way of making the kitchen much more functionable, and the laundry room would allow us to get through to the dining room much more easily, because the only other way is to go out, through the hallway, through the living room, and around the far side of the dining room.
Anything else?
Not that I can think of. To me, it would enhance the house. And I spoke to one of my neighbors who actually has a, her house extends all the way to the sidewalk. She has a variance that allows her to go, oh, sorry, to go all the way to the sidewalk. So she's completely built to the sidewalk. And I did take some pictures on my phone, if you wanted to see that. So it wasn't that it's not been done in my neighborhood before. She actually doesn't have any part, and she said she had no problem with my doing this expansion. She thought it was a good idea. And I know other friends in the neighborhood that I live in have all said that they were going to fax in their support for the project.
Okay. Thank you. Item 28 has been noticed for public hearing. Are any members of the public here to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and open this for discussion. Vice Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of quick questions through you for the applicant. So my orientation's off, just that the north, or the rear of your house faces north, is that correct?
No, it is to the south.
To the south.
Oh, I'm sorry. The front of your house faces north?
Yes.
Correct.
All right. And then, so the portion of the property where you're going to have a three-foot side yard setback versus a five-foot setback, is that, that's a button the street, correct?
No.
That's a button your neighbor's property?
Yes. Currently, there's eight feet there, and we're asking to make that space three feet.
And do you have their, a letter of support from the neighbor?
No, I do not.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions?
Vice Chair asked my same question. If I'm going to approve a variance to allow a shorter setback, I'm going to want to know that that neighbor is in agreement with that, and without that, I'm not sure I can support it.
Well, we were told that the notifications would be sent out.
They were.
Yes.
In fact, I got a letter, and I got a postcard regarding the notifications, that, you know, the postcard looked like this. I didn't bring the postcard, I only brought the letter. And it said that if they opposed, they could send in a response.
Yeah. And what I'm telling you, I'm not looking for an opposition, I'm looking for support for what you're asking me to do, specifically from that neighbor that's affected right next to where you're seeking this addition. Any other questions or comments by the planning commissioners? Commissioner Cherry?
Through the chair, if I may. So the setback is just on the utility portion, correct?
Yes.
Because it's, and I have to stand with my fellow commissioners on what they just stated, but it seems to me that you could go back with a redesign and relocate that utility portion closer to your second kitchen, and probably fall within what you need to do, and not have to come with a variance, just a suggestion. But I will be standing with my commissioners on this. Thank you.
I'm not understanding where we would put it, based on looking at the design.
Yeah, all the utilities are confined in this one corner of the property. You know, we tried to kick it around, and it just made the most sense. Also, right now, there's a utility building on the back of our house that we're going to be eliminating. It just aesthetically is going to improve the property. It's going to improve the neighborhood. I mean, you've seen the rendering. We just feel it's a real good community effort for the neighborhood. It's very positive, we feel. I guess we didn't, we thought the notification would take care of anybody, including the neighbor, if they had any problem with it. Also, in the notes, they said when they came and inspected the neighborhood, you know, the house is immaculate. She's obviously a very upstanding person in the community. The plans have been approved at the building, and when they saw that variance, they just suggested in the wall that we do a fire barrier, you know, because of the encroachment, and the plans have been approved.
Well, you understand staff has recommended denial of your application. I mean, so...
Right. You know, I just questioned why they didn't bring that point up to me, because when I explained what we were doing, they were very upbeat, and, yep, makes sense, and away we went. So I was kind of concerned when I got denial, that information wasn't related to me at the time.
Commissioner Trailbridge?
Thank you, Chairman. I have no problems with your project at all. Where you're deficient is simply, it's always easier if you have the support of the neighbor.
It would be nice if somebody had told me.
Hang on.
Yeah, I realize that's the difficulty.
I need to ask you, we've closed the public comments, so right now, we're only discussing this as a planning commission. You may be asked a question... You may be asked a question, and I'll give you an opportunity to respond at that point, but right now, I just need to hear from Commissioner Trowbridge, please.
Yeah, and that would, that would be my only suggestion is to get full support. I, I think you gotta, I understand what you're trying to do. I've been to this movie before, but the, the support of your, your immediate neighbor is, is pretty critical to overcome a staff objection. And they, in defense of the staff, they have technical requirements they have to support. They, they can't grant waivers. They've got to stick to the rules. We can grant the waivers, but it makes it easier for us to make that jump if we have the letter from the people next door.
So, let, let me...
Did you ask for their, could I ask one?
Please.
Did you ask for a letter from them?
I didn't know I needed to.
Didn't know it would be beneficial. Like, that makes perfect sense, I understand.
Nobody said anything to me about any, it's my first time doing anything like this. It's the first house I've ever owned. I rented for over 24 years in Long Beach, so...
I understand. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, through you, and it's very common that people don't understand that they need the support from their neighbors and things such as that, and don't understand how the commission works. And however, I do agree with Commissioner Cherry that it could be redesigned in a particular way, but it's not our job to sit up here at the dais and redesign a project and understand utilities, and I'm a contractor, so, but if you have a kitchen right there, a utility room, I don't see how that would not work off the back of the kitchen. I mean, you're only encroaching two feet in, into that setback area. However, I'll just say, considering that, you know, you might not have understood some of these things, I'll give you the opportunity to hold this item in abeyance for 30 days, and you'll come back before us on December 13th, 2016, to give you time to go talk to your neighbor and see if you can get their support. Or, it's your option, we can just go ahead and vote on this tonight and see how it goes.
Well, I think if we need to get the consent from the neighbor, I mean, they've obviously been notified, and they didn't follow.
Okay, so I guess we will wait then?
Yeah, if that's what it would take. I mean, when I got the, you know, meeting at the pre-conference, I guess...
I spoke to the other neighbor, I didn't see the other one.
Okay. Well, you know, just because somebody notices go out, not everybody gets the notices or gets the notices in time, so therefore, and not everybody will respond to them. I get about 15 notices a month, and I throw them in the trash, because I'm on the planning commission, and I'm, I know about the items that are coming before us. So, it sounds like you want to go ahead and hold this in abeyance and talk to your neighbor?
Well, would we need a notarized letter from them? How would we want to handle that?
Just a letter.
Okay. Okay, sure.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if there's no other discussion, I'm ready to go ahead and make a motion on this item.
Thank you.
On item 28, VAR 66689, I would make a motion, hold this item in abeyance for 30 days until December 13th, 2016, planning commission hearing.
Thank you. Please vote. Motion carries. So, we'll see you next month, hopefully with a letter of support from your neighbor.
Yes.
It'll go a long way. Thank you. Item 29 is VAR 66733. The applicant owner is Cynthia Moda. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a zero-foot rear and side yard setback where three feet is required for two existing accessory structures, class-two sheds, and to allow accessory structures that are not aesthetically compatible with the principal dwelling unit at 1801 Cochran Street in Ward Three. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting a variance of both setback and compatibility requirements for two accessory structures located in the rear yard of the site. The structures could be removed or relocated and/or designed to be compatible with the existing residence. No evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented to substantiate the request, and staff has recommended denial as the hardship is self-imposed. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication.
Good evening.
Good evening. I have picture...
I need your name and address, please.
Cynthia Moda, 1801 Cochran Street, Las Vegas, 89104. And I didn't catch the last part that you said about the letters of...
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, he was making a statement that additional letters of protest have been received by the planning department after the publication of the agenda to the internet, so there are additional protest cards in your backup material.
Yeah. According to my material, we received seven protests, no supports since the backup material was, was published.
Okay, I was unaware of that. But I do have photos showing that we have made the structures compatible, painted them, and did some cosmetic work there to make them more compatible with the dwelling.
Why don't you show those? We're, we're looking at, if you can put those in front of you, between those, there you go.
All right, this one.
Okay. Next?
Do I put it in the same place?
Yeah, just put it, remove one, there you go. Okay. Thank you. Any more?
And this one. And this one also shows how, you know, that we built it there, because this, this smaller shed was already existing in the property when we bought it in 2003. Okay? And, and we figured, well, if that one is okay right there in the corner, then this one would be okay there. And in fact, in our neighborhood, I would say definitely over half of the homes have storage sheds or other structures built up right against the property line. And I just wanted to correct the record and say that it's, these are in the southeast corner.
Okay. Thank you.
And I also have, I think this was placed in our mailbox by a neighbor, Mark and Ryan Miller.
You, you can hand that to staff. We'll make that a part of tonight's record.
Okay. And I did check with our immediate neighborhood there on Cochran Street, and they all said that they were in support of this. So, particularly the person who lives across the street and owns the home next to this property line.
Do you happen to have any letters?
I do not.
From them?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
No, just that, I, you know, it's the physical hardship of having to tear these structures down and rebuild them, and it's also, I feel that it's a hardship for us to have to put them on the other side and block our view.
Okay.
I think that's all.
All right. Thank you. Item 29 has been properly noticed for public hearing.
Just one more thing. This was built in, like, 2005. We never had any complaints or activity until they started doing street work, and then we got this code violation on them. The one was already in existence in 2003 when we purchased the property, and the other one was built by my husband in 2005.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Item 29 is noticed for public hearing. If any members of the public are wished to be heard on this item, please come forward and state your name and address. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and open this for discussion on the planning commission.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair?
Thank you. Through you, just a few comments. You know, I'm, I'm not sure if you could actually see this from the street, so, and I know this was a code enforcement violation, so it must have been one of the neighbors or somebody who could see it that, that made this complaint. You know, I understand the hardship and with, you know, I read your entire application and about Javier Moda, who went through a few meniscus repairs, have been through a few ACL repairs, but still, that doesn't really give us legal justification to be able to grant a variance when zero feet off of, off of a property line. And one of the biggest issues is, with it being zero feet off of the property line, it's impossible for...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I wasn't looking. The clerk called my attention. We don't have a quorum. Without another fourth, let me go get the other commissioner.
I'll hold my comments for a second.
So, until we have another, we, we can't have any discussion until we get another planning commissioner back, so...
I just want...
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I should have, I should have, I guess I should have informed you that no bathroom breaks until we actually have an official break, since we are without a quorum.
May I clarify something?
No, ma'am.
No comments right now.
We just have to wait till we get a quorum, a full quorum of the body.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, looks like we have a quorum. So, before I let you have a, let me give you a quick comment. It seems like you want to say something.
Okay. I just want to clarify that it's not exactly zero feet, it's a, you know, a few inches, probably six inches, but at the planning department, they advised us to request the zero-foot setback.
Thank you. And, and that's quite typical, I mean, because we don't have a six-inch setback where five feet's required. Usually, we just round down to zero feet, or if it's a foot and a half, then we round down to a foot, so. But one of the biggest issues is when it comes down to maintaining the structures like this, the only way that you really can maintain it and paint it and keep it maintained where your, maintain where your neighbors aren't looking at bare plywood is to be able to gain access to your neighbor's property. And, you know, it's unfortunate, because the one shed that looks like it's been there for about 20 years seem, appears to be sunk, sunken down into the ground by, you know, 12 to 14 inches or so. And, believe me, the, the paint job that you did on outside looks amazing, but just being zero feet off of a property line, I wouldn't want a structure zero foot off of a property line, my property line at my house. And so, that's just my comments, but I'd love to hear from the other commissioners.
Yeah. Commissioner Slotman, I, I share your opinion. The paint job definitely made this look more aesthetically pleasing. I don't think it is aesthetically compatible, however, considering especially the, the code requirements that, that mandate a larger setback. I also wouldn't want to have an abutting property with, with a structure right up against my property line, so I, I'm afraid I can't support your request. Commissioner Cherry?
Through the chair, I, I do stand in the same place with my commissioners, similar to the last application that we just went through. I'm also made, prepared to make a motion if there's no further discussion.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Please do.
Item number 29, VAR 66733, move to follow staff's condition for denial.
All right. Thank you. Motion is to follow staff's recommendation for denial. A yes vote is for denial. Please vote. That motion carries. Item 29 is denied.
Mr. Chairman, item number 29 will be heard by the City Council on December 21st, 2016.
Okay.
So, what is the process that we go through now? I mean...
You, you will do the same thing you've done tonight, but before City Council.
Oh, so we come back for the City Council meeting?
You will.
And when is that?
It's on December 21st, 2016.
And...
And, Mr. Chairman, could, could we give them a time? Because it's not at 6:00 PM.
It's a 1 o'clock time certain will start. The planning items will start at 1 o'clock. That agenda will be posted three days before, so you can get a look at where you are on the agenda.
And can we provide additional informa, I mean, additional evidence, like, say, if, if we can obtain a letter of support from our neighbors, the, the ones that have that property there? Or what?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, yes, you can bring anything, any additional letters of support, you can bring that date for the City Council, or you can provide them to the planning department ahead of time, and we'll have them available for the City Council.
Okay. Can I submit these pictures to the record then?
Yes. Please hand them to the clerk.
And then, I also, you have that other postcard, right? And then, okay, so there's going to be no action on this as far as the code violation until after that, after we're, we're heard at the City Council meeting, correct?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, we'll have, we'll have code enforcement contact you with that information tomorrow, but while it's in the system, the staff would not be moving forward until the City Council had a chance to hear from it, but we'll make sure an officer gets in touch with you, okay?
Okay. And so, we come with more support from our neighbors, and that's the...
I'm actually going to have you, if you'll step us, if you'll step aside, and a member of staff can, can walk you through all your questions.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. So, I want to go back now to items 14 through 17. I'm going to go ahead and read those into the, the record, even though we don't have another planning commissioner here, and we can explain to the applicant after we do that, the ramifications of that. Beginning with item 14, GPA 66496, the applicant owner is Mabuhay Commercial Investment Four LLC. For possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from R. Rural Density Residential to SC Service Commercial at the northeast corner of Centennial Parkway and Tenaya Way in Ward Six. Staff recommends denial. Item 15 is ZON 66497, for possible action on a request for a rezoning from U. Undeveloped, R. Rural Density Residential General Plan Designation to C1 Limited Commercial in Ward Six. Staff recommends denial. Item 16 is VAR 66498, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a 10-foot residential adjacency setback where 81 feet is required in Ward Six. Staff recommends denial. And item 17, SDR 66499, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 8,800-square-foot medical clinic and medical office development with waivers to allow a zero-foot landscape buffer along the south perimeter, an 11-foot buffer along the north perimeter where 15 feet is required, and to not orient the building to the corner where such is required in Ward Six. Staff recommends denial. Can we please have staff's report?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing a clinic and medical office with a variance for residential adjacency. The request to development of the site does not comply with the stated intent of Section 3.2 of the Centennial Hills Sector Plan, which is to prevent the sprawl of commercial and office projects into developing residential neighborhoods, which, which exist in the plan area by centrally locating the town center on the Beltway and US 95 interchange. The site is located just outside of the town center master plan area, and the intensity of the proposed general plan amendment and rezoning are too intense for the surrounding adjacent residential area, and the required variance to residential adjacency combined with the waivers of landscape buffer requirements indicates that the site is being overdeveloped. Staff is recommending denial of all applications.
Okay. Thank you. Can I please have the applicant step forward? And before we hear from you, I'll let the city attorney explain to you what will happen if we go forward with these items this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The city code require, and interest provides that you must have a supermajority in order to approve a general plan amendment, meaning of the seven persons that sit on this board, five would have to vote an approval in order for your item to go forward to City Council with an approval. Because there's only four members of the, of the commission here today, even if all four voted an approval, it would go onto the record to City Council as a denial for failure to reach a supermajority. So, they can hear the, the item tonight, Mr. Chair. You can hear the item tonight. You can all vote. It'll go and vote on all the items as you normally would. The City Council will then be, it would be recognized in the agenda that it was 4-0 if you vote that way, but it failed because it didn't reach a supermajority.
Thank you very much. And just my preference would be to go ahead, if the applicant is in agreement, even understanding that no matter how we vote, it's item 14, we'll go forward as a denial. At least he'll be able to see how the vote comes out. So, I'll let the applicant... I'll let the applicant state name and address, and then we'll hear what your preference would be.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Forest Furman Lee, 9992 Catalina Canyon Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada. As per Mr. Chairman, your suggestion, we would like to proceed with the application hearing.
All right, very good. We'd happy, be happy to hear your presentation then.
Thank you. Again, good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. We have this 1.21 acres property, which is on the northeast corner of Centennial and Tenaya. This property has been owned by us since 1998, and we have worked, we have waited for a long time for it to reach its maturity. We had met with the staff, and we had suggestions from the staff as to what we can do with this property, and we also had a meeting with our neighbors on September 26th. And six neighbors, you know, showed up at, at that meeting, and they were pretty much, you know, in our opinion, looking forward to something to be developed on this site. And we actually had support from the neighbors that stated that they would, they did not mind a commercial use as long as the project is a viable project, an elegant project that will serve the community. What we are actually sharing with you, we have, to the north, it's a two-acre parcel of the subject property, which is master plan for office use. We also have, to the east of us, is a property in the county, which is also master plan for office use. To the south of us, we have the Furniture Road and the Centennial, the Centennial Furniture Road and the 215 freeway. To the west of us, we have apartments. So what we actually have, I would like to go over with the denial request, so that I think we have met most of the, the requirements that GPA requires. Apologize, my hand, my thumb is bleeding a little bit because I cut myself. So excuse me if I'm a little bit not aligned here.
Let us pass down some tissues to you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Looks like you're in need of a neighborhood physician.
Chairman Commissioners, we, what we're suggesting here, or what we designed here is two separate buildings. One is medical clinic, and the second one is the medical building itself. On, on the medical clinic, we are designing to build an urgent care facility on it, which requires, you know, walk-in customers and patients. So that is the reason that we are going with the C1 use, which is the limited commercial use on the subject property. Based on, you know, the requirements from, from Title 19.16030, we really meet some of the three requirements that, that really qualify the project for, for GPA approval. One being the compatibility, and just I mentioned earlier, we have office master plan to the north. East, again, office to the south, we have the freeway, and to the west, we have the apartments. So, as earlier mentioned, the zoning is again required for the use that we are proposing on this project, and that's why, you know, we have the C1 zoning on, on this property. In terms of, you know, any issues with, with neighbors or with traffic or any utilities, we don't have any of those issues on the site. Tenaya being an 80-foot arterial, and we have a 60-foot street to the south of us. So the access that we have on this project is coming from Tenaya as well as on Centennial. So we're really not impacting any other neighbors other than the traffic flow, which will be on Tenaya and on Centennial, you know, going west. So we feel that the zoning is needed for the use that we have, and it's not really creating any infrastructure burden on the city or to the neighbors. The, the site development plan review application, we are, you know, proposing, like I said, two buildings, which are really, we have the elevations to share with you. And when we showed these to the neighbors, they were really very happy and ecstatic about the way we have designed the building. We have, you know, support from our neighbor to the east. We did get a letter from him, and he definitely supports this project. He just wanted us to, to create the balance of landscaping, and which we have agreed to do that. So we are really, that's the only neighbor that will be impacted directly next to this property. So in, in a nutshell, you know, we are actually really not burdening or creating any opposition to the neighbors because our neighbors are really not there. This, as you know, is a signalized corner. We have Tenaya, Centennial, and we would really like to seek your approval. I'll be more than glad, my brother here will be more than glad to answer any questions that you may have, and we look forward to your comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Items 14 through 17 have been properly noticed for public hearing. If any members of the public are here to be heard on any of these items, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment, and I, I guess I'll make my comments first. You know, usually, I would be concerned with service commercial at an area like this. However, in order to have a, a neighborhood physician, to have this urgent care facility and to have walk-ins available, it's my understanding that under Title 19, you need that designation. And, you know, considering the proximity of this, we, on the southeast, south, I'm sorry, southwest side, you have the, the Beltway, the 215 Beltway. Immediately across the street, you have the View Apartments and Blue Marble Property. It, it seems to me that this is a, a good location for, for this type of project, especially considering what we approved last month, which just about a quarter of a mile down the road is the medical, the convalescent care facility that you mentioned in your comments. And therefore, for, for those reasons, you'll see my support on these projects tonight. Vice Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through you, just a few comments. I was kind of torn on this one. I, I know that last month I voted against both the projects because they actually encroached into the, the residential neighborhood, and I didn't feel that it was a very good fit. However, looking at this one and seeing the sun, Centennial Parkway and Tenaya, two major streets, right on the 215 Beltway, and considering that you have the support of your neighbor to the east, and also looking at my agenda and seeing that you have like 14 new supports, letters of support since the last planning commission hearing, I think I could support this item.
Thank you, Commissioner Slotman. Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on item number 14, I'd move to approve subject, oh, subject to staff's conditions.
All right, motion is to approve item 14, please vote. Motion carry, uh, a motion is denied because we lack a supermajority, so we, you will go forward with a 4-0 vote, but it is for denial. Item 15?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Did I state that correctly?
He just looked confused, I just wanted to make sure he understood that that was. It's, it's required to go on as a denial because there are not five people here to vote.
That's correct.
Yeah.
You appreciate the glove.
Okay, item 15?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, item 15, advance item ZON 66497, I'd move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
Thank you, please vote. Item 15 is approved.
Mr. Chairman, item number 16, advance VAR 66498, I'd move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
Please vote. Motion carries.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, on item number 17, advance item SDR 66499, I'd move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items 14, 15, 16, and 17 will be heard by the city council on December 21st, 2016.
Thank you very much, you appreciate your cooperation.
Thank you. Moving on to item 30, VAR 66818, the applicant owner is Tricia K. Nilson Light and Sean M. Light, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow five-foot side and rear yard setbacks where 10 feet is required for a proposed 590 square foot accessory structure, Class 2 shed, at 6205 New Kirk Court in Ward 6. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting a variance for the setback requirement for an accessory structure to be located in the rear yard. The site is large enough to accommodate the structure and a location that complies with the requirements of Title 1906. Since no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented to substantiate the request, staff has recommended denial as hardship is self-imposed.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening, thank you for your time, Commissioner and Chair. We're requesting.
I need you, I'm sorry, I need you to state your name and address.
Tricia Nilson Light, and I live at 6205 New Kirk Court, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89130.
Sean Light, 6205 New Kirk Court, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89130.
We're requesting a variance for a structure that we would like to build on the back of our property. In preparation for this, we received approval through our HOA, making sure that this structure is compatible with our neighborhood, that will have stucco and tile on top. We did get letters of approval from our three neighbors, the neighbor to the north on New Kirk where we live, the neighbor to the west on Rodman behind us, and the neighbor that is kitty corner on the northwest, also on Rodman behind us. In looking at our neighborhood, there are four existing structures that our neighbors also have that are within five feet of their property, so it's not within the required 10 feet. There's one on Rodman, which is west of us, and there are three on Maryland's Court, which are east of us. We're each in cul-de-sacs. Really, the purpose of our structure is for storage, so we can also park in the garage. It's going to be aesthetic to our community, but it's also, we're looking for functionality as far as where the gate is positioned to be able to back into that structure in the back of the property. In the future, we plan on installing a pool, and we want to have room to make it safe for children and to have all of the requirements necessary to make it a nice, functional property. The existing concrete pad, it has been inspected, and it meets the code for the size and the structure of, for the size of the structure that we would propose on building. It's on the inner corner of the property, and it's not next to either road. The plans have also been submitted, as you can see with the attachments.
Thank you. Anything else to add?
No, sir.
Okay, very good. Item 30 has been noticed for public hearing. Are any of the members, are any members of the public here to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment, and you've done everything I would have asked you to do. You've seen us ask some applicants tonight to go back and get letters of approval. You've got one from the HOA, from the neighbors. I, I like the proposal, and so you'll see my support on this tonight. Vice Chair?
Yes, Ms. Chairman, I agree with everything that you said. And in addition, I think during one of our briefings, we were taking a look at this, and there was quite a bit of trees surrounding this particular corner. So I don't think it will really have that big of an effect on the neighbors, and they'll be able to maintain the, the structure, so I could be in support of this as well. If there's no other comments, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion. Mr. Chairman, on item number 30, VAR 66818, I'd move to approve, subject to staff's conditions, based on testimonial heard today.
Thank you, please vote. Motion carries, item 30 is approved.
Mr. Chairman, item 30 is final action this evening. Any appeals would need to be made to the city clerk's office within 10 days. Thank you for your time.
Moving on to item 31, WVR 66692, the applicant owner is Touchstone Lone Mountain LLC. For possible action on a request to allow no external streetlights for a proposed four-lot residential subdivision at the southeast corner of Hickam Avenue and Giuliano Road in Ward 4, staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, in conjunction with the construction of a proposed two-and-a-half acre residential development that is not before you tonight, this, the applicant is proposing to construct off-site improvements at the southeast corner of Hickam and Giuliano Road without installing streetlights. Although streetlights are not customary in this area, streetlights improve roadway visibility at night, and therefore, staff recommends denial of this application. If approved, streetlights will be deferred, and the applicant will be required to either provide the normal required streetlights to the city or pay a contribution fee equivalent to the public cost of installing the streetlights.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening, Robert Cunningham, 6030 South Jones Boulevard, with Tanny Engineering, representing the applicant. The site's located roughly right here, well, you guys have it highlighted. There's no streetlights on any of the residential communities in this general vicinity. When we started this project, right at the beginning of the recession, we had filed for a variance and had the streetlights waived. Our vary, the variance was approved. Since then, that variance expired. We're here now moving forward again with the project, and we'd request the same approval so that we can move forward with it. With that, I'd answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. Item 31 has been noticed for public hearing. Is anyone here to be heard, either for or against this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Vice Chair?
Yes, I, Ms. Chairman, through you, question for Public Works, and if Lucian could just kind of give me some general guidelines on what, what sort of illumination is Public Works looking for on sidewalks, long streets? Do y'all do it in foot candles, or do you do it in distance between streetlights? And can you comment on off-site sidewalks versus, I mean, off-site streetlights versus streetlights in, on interior streets?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, through you, we have a standard drawing that kind of gives the foot candle illumination required for both pedestrian and roadway. And those, the distances are also covered in the blue book standards that are countywide. So they give the distances on a street, on these streets, they're 60-foot streets, so we're looking at, you know, streetlights on one side of the street, and I think it's approximately 160 feet apart, 180, somewhere in that range. As far as the interior street lighting, if, if it's a public streetlight, then it's, it follows the same standard. If it's a public roadway, it follows the same as the blue book standard. And if it's an inter-private street, then we don't really have any public work requirements on the private streets.
Okay, thank you. We keep seeing these requests come over and over and over, and in regards to this being a rural area, and it seems like at every planning commission hearing, we approve one, two, three, five of these projects. I just haven't felt that one day the city of Las Vegas. I just haven't felt that one day, the city of Las Vegas, even though Public Works is going to have a whole barn full of streetlights that developers have donated to the city of Las Vegas, I think at some point, we've got to put our foot down and just say, hey, there's no justification, real justification for not putting in the streetlights, and also stand our ground on starting to put in sidewalks. I've said this over and over and over, I'm tired of seeing people walking, pushing strollers down the street because there's no sidewalk. That's my own opinion, what the commission expressed their, their own comments on this, but I, I don't think I can support not putting in the streetlights any longer.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair, and I will add my comments. As you know, in Ward Six, there are many rural properties. Many times, in fact, we have an item coming up next where the neighbors specifically ask for no streetlights to preserve that rural feel in the neighborhood. Sometimes, because of horse properties, they also don't want sidewalks, so I try to take those on a case-by-case basis, but in this instance, because the surrounding properties, from what I've heard from the applicant, also don't have streetlights, knowing that, you know, either we get the streetlights or a payment that is deferred is there should we decide we need them down the road, that satisfies me, so you will see my support for, for your application tonight. Any other comments? Commissioner?
Through the chair, I certainly understand Commissioner Schlovin's frustrations, but I, I believe just with the proximity of this parcel, what's around it, and how Hick, is it Hickam, is that how you pronounce it? Hickman, kind of dead ends before it gets to, it looks like a canal, that, what is that right there?
There's a drain channel right here.
Thank you, through the drain channel. I can support the application specifics to no streetlights, and I'm also prepared to make a motion.
Please do.
On item thirty-one, W V R six-six-six-nine-two, I make a motion for approval, subject to all staff's conditions.
Motion is to approve item thirty-one, please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman-
I'm, I'm sorry. Make that a motion against, I'm sorry, make that a-
A no vote for-
A no vote against the motion, thank you.
All right, we'll change your vote. Regardless, the motion still carries, three to one.
Mr. Chairman, this item will be heard before the City Council on December twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen.
Thank you. Moving on to item thirty-two, W V R six-seven-zero-nine-six, the applicant is Summit Homes of Nevada, LLC, and the owner is Roaring Fork Management, LLC, for possible action on a request for a waiver to allow no streetlights along Alpine Ridge Way and on the interior of a proposed twenty-two-lot, single-family residential subdivision at the northwest corner of Centennial Parkway and Alpine Ridge Way in Ward Six. Staff recommends denial. We have the staff report.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to build a twenty-two-lot subdivision on four-point-seven-nine acres at the northwest corner of Centennial Parkway and Alpine Ridge without constructing streetlights on public streets. This site was approved by a planning commission at the last meeting. It is not customary for R-one lots to not have public, uh, streetlights on public streets, therefore, we recommend denial of this application. If approved, streetlights will be deferred, and the applicant will be required to provide the normal required streetlights to the city or pay a contribution fee equivalent to the public cost of installing the streetlights.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening, Robert Cunningham, sixty-thirty South Jones Boulevard with TANIA Engineering, representing the applicant on this item. Again, at the last planning commission meeting, our, our site plan was approved, and we agreed through previous neighborhood meeting that we had had, some of the residents that live in particularly in the south of Centennial, in the area that's the rural neighborhood preservation, wanted us to come back and apply for no streetlights in the entire community. We agreed that we would do that. We don't have a problem doing it. We are planning on putting coach lights on each side of the garage of every single house in this community, so that will aid in lighting up the streets. Those will be on photo cells, so they'll automatically come on when the sun goes down and turn off when the sun goes up. With that, we've requested to not put streetlights on anything other than Centennial. Centennial's plan to go over the Beltway in the next few years with the Beltway improvements, and we believe that Centennial's a major thoroughfare, and the streetlights are really needed for that. The rest of our subdivision, Alpine Ridge, and we have two public cul-de-sacs, we're proposing not to have the streetlights. We would recommend or request your approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Item thirty-two has been noticed for a public hearing. Does anyone wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. I do have a question for the applicant. Did you say the coach lights are on the corner, each corner of the garage or of the, of the each house?
On each side of the garage.
Each side of the garage, and to Public Works, could we condition that, that the coach lights becomes part of this development?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure that that's a Public Works condition that it's enforceable.
That may be a little bit more difficult, but I'm not sure exactly how coach lights are defined, or if there's a different style or type or size, or, so that may be a little too general-
Okay.
-to probably enforce.
All right, that answers my question, thank you. And as the applicant knows from my previous remarks, this actually is the result of a neighborhood meeting where we have neighbors who have specifically requested no streetlights. I understand why, I see also why you would put them in along Centennial. I think the no streetlights, except for along Centennial, does help preserve this rural feel of the, the neighborhood and this community, and is therefore compatible, so you'll see my support on that. Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, I even oppose this one a lot, a lot more than I opposed the last one, the last one being four units, this being twenty-something, something units. Across, across the street from C V, I think it's potentially going to be a school one day. Even you stated that you wouldn't mind putting in the streetlights. I don't know what neighbors are actually opposing this, if it's the ones across the street from Centennial Parkway, but I don't know how interior streetlights are going to like, um, affect the people across Centennial Parkway or across Alpine, Alpine Ridge Road. I mean, I understand neighbors don't want it, but I'm really against this. I didn't want to put in the streetlights when I first moved to Vegas in my communities, and I put in the streetlights. And what, what we said we were going to do is put up coach lights and floodlights and photo cells. Well, guess what? Those light bulbs burn out, you know, sometimes twice a month, and guess what, what happens then? Your whole community turns dark, becomes unsafe, doesn't give you a fill in the security. You might not need that fill in the security in a four-lot subdivision where you know all your neighbors, but when you start getting into these bigger subdivisions, you, you need more than just coach lights and little floodlights and photo cells. We went back and we put, hired a company through our HOAs in every one of the communities that we built to go check the floodlights once a month to make sure that they're, the bulbs are being replaced and photo cells, but still, even at that, without the streetlights, our communities wouldn't feel safe, and I don't see any, any justification of not putting in the streetlights in this community.
Any other comments?
Through the chair, I agree that we do have to have on Centennial. I, I also feel like we need it on Alpine Ridge as well, due to its proximity to the existing school, looks like just to the east there, and what can come in the future. I, I don't have an issue with the waiver of the interior lights, but I, I won't be supporting it simply because I do feel like we need it on Alpine. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Trowbridge, any comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we'll see where this goes, but I think I've already voiced my opinion on item number thirty-two, waiver six-seven-zero-nine-six, I move to follow staff's recommendation for denial.
All right, motion is to deny item thirty-two, please vote. All right, that motion fails, so do we need an alternative motion?
We do.
Commissioner Trowbridge, will you make that?
I might be leading this down a path we don't want to go, but I tend to agree with the perimeter lighting, so I would, I would make a motion that we approve the request as presented, subject to all staff conditions for denial, with the addition that the exterior perimeter along the, where'd it go?
Alpine Ridge Way.
Along Alpine and Centennial Parkway be provided.
Okay, so the motion would be for approval if the streetlights are placed along Alpine Ridge Way, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may clarify, if you add a condition that basically, simply states the waiver to allow no streetlights along Alpine Ridge Way is denied, and therefore, the only thing that would be approved for the motion would then be the interior streetlights.
All right.
That's, that's absolutely what I meant to say.
Okay.
Or, Mr. Chairman, if I might recommend, on condition number five, we just take out Alpine Ridge Way, so we just say the installation of streetlights on the interior street subdivisions shall be deferred, and that also takes care, if we just modify condition five and remove Alpine Ridge Way, then I think that also accomplishes what you want to do.
All right, would the applicant agree to, to that change and be willing to place streetlights along Alpine Ridge Way?
If, if you guys so desire, then we'll go from there.
Yeah, that's going to be the motion, I need to make sure that you, you are in agreement before we do vote.
Yes.
Okay, all right, please vote. All right, that motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman, that item will also be heard before the City Council on December twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen.
Thank you. Okay, we are now to related items thirty-three and thirty-four. Item thirty-three is S U P six-six-five-four-four. This is a special use permit. The applicant owner is Main Street Investment Three, LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed drive-through at thirteen-eleven South Main Street, A P N one-six-two-zero-three-one-one-zero-one-three-one, C M Commercial Industrial Zone in Ward Three, staff recommends approval. And related item thirty-four, S D R six-six-five-four-five, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed restaurant with drive-through, with a waiver of the downtown Centennial Plan parking lot screening requirements in Ward Three, staff recommends approval.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Vice Chair?
Yes, I'll, I'll be abstinent on this matter, as I've worked on this building in the past. Thank you.
Through the, through the chair, if I may.
Yes.
I have a, I'd like to disclose that the company has a financial interest in a development in the notification area. I don't feel like it affects us in a lesser or greater way, so I will be voting on that.
Okay, thank you. And to the city attorney, with the knowledge that the vice chair must abstain on items thirty-three and thirty-four, what does that mean?
You can vote as normal, chairman, and it will still take a majority vote of, so three, it will still require three, three votes in the affirmative to approve it.
Okay, very good. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, staff finds the proposed use accommodates the required onsite stacking for the drive-through component on the, of the use, and supports the repurposing, repurposing of the subject site. Please note additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publication.
Good evening.
Good evening. Andrew Gutierrez with Novus Architecture, eight East Charleston Boulevard, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-zero-three. I'm here representing the applicant. Can we use this real quick? So as you guys know, that downtown is evolving, it's getting beautified by bars, restaurants, retail, in particular, Main Street. So we're focusing on this industrial building located on Main Street between Colorado and Imperial. This building has been vacant for many years, it's an industrial building, and we're hoping to bring in a cafe with adjacent retail and other future restaurants. The, the building, we want to have an attached drive-through access through Imperial Palace, I'm sorry, Imperial Avenue, down the alleyway. The drive-through will be, will have landscape, both the back and the front of Main Street. The existing building has an attached canopy, where we're hoping to have outdoor seating in the rear as well as on Main Street. There's going to be handicap accessible parking spaces in the rear, three parking spaces on the north side of the, of the facility. Here is a preliminary floor plan, general cafe seating, restrooms, bar, a drive-through window. This dotted line represents the existing canopy, the outdoor seating, outdoor seating in the front on Main Street. This is the adjacent space where we're hoping to have future retail for three tenants. Here are the general elevations of the, of the facade. This is the west elevation facing Main Street, and this is elevation facing north elevation. This right here, these are fairly pre- preliminary renderings. This is off of Main Street, it kind of shows the three retail spaces, the cafe in the corner. This right here, it's a little old, so it doesn't show the, the drive-through, but it kind of gives you a general idea of the look that we're going for off of Main Street right here. And then downtown, there's very few coffee shops, but none with the drive-through, so we're hoping to get your approval to have a drive-through in this particular area.
All right, thank you very much. Items thirty-three and thirty-four have been noticed for a public hearing. If any members of the public are here to speak either for or against these items, please come forward and state your name and address. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment, and I just have to say, you know you have a millennial applicant in front of you, and they use a smartphone dongle as a pointer during the presentation. Nice job.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
Through the chair, if I may, disclose, I realized during the presentation that various companies I've worked with have engaged the architecture firm. We have no current business, it's been well over a couple of years that we've used them, so I still will be voting on the application as well.
Very good.
If I could add to that with some comments, question for staff, this is outside of the eighteen-B designation that the city has? Or Arts District, excuse me? One moment, I'll check that. And, and the reason I ask is there's, there's, I don't believe it's an allowed use to have a drive-through within the Arts District, and I believe this is to the south of it, which I wouldn't have an issue with, but if it is in the Arts District, I know there's a, a large contingency of people over the years that have had issue with it.
So I can clarify, Mr. Chairman, it's actually outside of the Arts District, it's fairly just south of an adjacent Arts District property, though.
Great, thank you. I will be supporting the, the application. If there's no further comments, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, thank you.
Item number thirty-three, S U P six-six-five-four-four, make a motion for approval.
Please vote. All right, that motion carries with a three-zero vote, noting the abstention of the vice chair.
Item number thirty-four, S D R six-six-five-four-five, I make a motion to approval, subject to all staff's conditions.
Please vote. Motion also carries noting the abstention.
Mr. Chairman, items thirty-three and thirty-four will be heard by the City Council on December twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen.
Thank you. Thank you. Good luck to you. We're now to related items thirty-five through thirty-seven. Item thirty-five is S U P six-six-eight-two-nine. The applicant is David Duggan, and the owner is Ten Twenty-eight Fremont, LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a trailer, RV camp, or park with a waiver to a- for a trailer, RV camp, or park with a waiver to allow recreational vehicle sites to be located zero feet from a public street where 15 feet is required and to allow a six-foot separation between back-end recreational vehicles where 10 feet is required. At the northwest corner of Fremont Street and 11th Street in Ward III, staff recommends approval. Item 36, SUP 66831, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a single-room occupancy residence in Ward III, staff recommends approval. And item 37, SDR 66832, for possible action on a request for a major amendment to previously approved site development plan review, SDR 49548, for the conversion of a portion of any existing shopping center into a seven-unit, single-room occupancy residence and 16-unit trailer, RV camp, or park use in Ward III, staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, before we begin, just wanted to say I've had a long history with this project and also with the applicant, and have ongoing business relationship with him. So, therefore, I have to abstain on this matter as well.
Thank you. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has proposed to demolish the northern wing of the existing building located on-site, while the remaining western wing, adjacent to the alleyway, will be used as a seven-unit, single-family occupants residence. Furthermore, the applicant has proposed to consolidate the adjacent undeveloped lot located in the north into the subject site. This additional area will be used to accommodate the proposed air streams on-site. Staff supports the request and is recommending approval of the applications. Please note additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. John Curran, 701 Bridger, Suite 850, here on behalf of the applicant to briefly describe this project to you and respectfully request your approval. If you'll recall, I appeared before this board a couple of years ago on this project, and apologize for the back-and-forth and the entitlements, but we are excited about this new direction and the final direction that we're going with and ready to proceed with the improvements just as soon as we have all necessary approvals in place. As you heard in the staff report, we are looking to convert this back portion of the old Ferguson's Hotel into a 16-trailer RV camp with an additional seven, single-room occupancy residences built on-site. With those, single-room occupancy residences will also be a sort of community area with communal kitchen, co-working lounge, restrooms, and that sort of thing. We believe this project will address a shortage of residential options in the downtown neighborhood. And it will sort of continue the positive momentum that's growing in East Fremont and surrounding area. It is a less intense use than that was, which was previously approved. It was previously approved as a tavern limited use, and now we are moving to that single-room occupancy residence and the RV camp. I have had the chance to speak with some stakeholders in the neighborhood tonight who shared some concerns and requested we read additional condition into the record to go on to the SUP. And that is that the business shall at no time rent motel rooms or trailers by the hour. That condition we gladly accept, and I'm happy to hand this over to staff if you'd like to put it into the record. And with all that in mind, I respectfully request you follow staff's recommendation for approval on this project. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Items 35 through 37 have been noticed for public hearing. Is anyone here to speak for or against any of these items?
Good evening. Doug Demacy, 208 North 9th. Thank you, Mr. Curran, for accepting the restriction. It shouldn't interfere with the business that's currently going on there. I... That was one of our concerns as a group was... There, I want to give these to the clerk, too. These are my cards. Thank you. There was previously a limited tavern license. And I'm assuming it's...
Can I just have you get in front of the microphone so we can pick you up?
Yes, sir. There was previously, he mentioned it, there's three limited tavern licenses and three outdoor stages had previously been approved. I'm still a little confused as to how the nightly rental of the trailers and motel room interact with outdoor stages and bars. But Mr. Curran indicated earlier that one of the tavern licenses is going to go away with this SUP. I just wanted to be clear on it. It was the one in the back that is the same site that we show here today in color. So, I believe it was SUP 5709, if I'm correct. I could be wrong. But I just wanted to clarify on the record that at least one of the SUPs is going away, the tavern, limited tavern licenses. Is that correct?
City?
Without an expungement, I'm not sure how that works. Is something overlaying the current tavern?
Right. I mean, could they come back and put a bar and an outdoor stage in the back with the trailers? It doesn't make any sense. But it doesn't make any sense with outdoor stages and bars in the front either, so...
Unless they expunge it, I don't know how that goes away, unless they don't use it for a time certain, and then it goes away. Or it's expunged, and it goes away.
Could we make that a condition of the SUP today?
They're not adjourned for that particular item tonight.
Okay. It is SUP 52709. And it was indicated to us today that it goes away.
All right. City Attorney?
Maybe staff can explain that, because I'm not certain how that happens automatically.
Mr. Chairman, the particular special use permit reference number is not bringing up anything. I'm looking through the subject site's land use entitlement history. There was a special use permit that was approved on April 12th of 2016 for tavern limited with this... With outdoor courtyard and second foot... Second-floor patio covers. But in general, if the land use entitlement has not been exercised, it will expire unless extended. If no applications for extensions of time is made, the typical period of time for the land use entitlement to exist is two years. So, after that time, if no one extends it, it's gone.
So, Mr. Chairman, if we could ask...
These were granted extensions.
If we could ask for the record exactly when that entitlement was granted on the property, then the gentleman would know when it would naturally expire.
They came back for extensions on the SUPs about nine months ago.
Okay. So, we need to... So, if that's the case, maybe...
And I have one of the cards from April 16th of 2014, if you want to...
So, if that's the case, then it wouldn't be till April of 2016? No. What, April 16th?
This says it's a... It says a city council meeting, April 16th, 2014.
Oh, so it'd be 16. Okay. So, it'd be 16. So, it may expire this year if we can find out from planning.
Like I said, though, they came back nine months ago for extensions.
All right. So, let's hear from staff on this.
Okay. Sorry.
All right. So, if they were approved in 2014, they were valid to 2016. If prior to that date expiration date, they applied for extension of times, it would be extended for another year, unless the actual motion was to grant something larger than that. Typically, it's one year.
Two years is what they gave, I believe.
So, there are one, two, three... Three different special use permits with... Associated with APN numbers that are also to the properties to the south. So, at this point in time, I can't tell you exactly which one would be to the north portion.
So, Mr. Chairman, with that information, if in fact it was renewed nine months ago, they would still have a year and three months for it to expire naturally. Otherwise, the applicant could come in for an expungement of that SUP.
So, I'm sorry.
So, let me ask to hear from the applicant first. Mr. Curran?
If I can clarify, there are three special use permits on this property for tavern limited uses. The ones closer to Fremont on the southern portion of the property, we're not in discussion on tonight. We're only focused on this northern portion, the back portion, that was previously approved from SUP. I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but the plan is that this new use, that of a 16-unit trailer camp and the single-room occupancy, will replace that entitlement.
It doesn't naturally...
That's good enough for me, what he just said. And I'll take John's word for it, too.
Just for the record, it doesn't replace it. It still exists on the parcel. So, in the natural course, if you don't utilize that tavern SUP, it will expire naturally.
Fair enough. Thank you. Thank you. So, it does exist, and I'm going to take John's word for it that he's not putting a bar in.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Stephen Smith. I live at 715 East Mesquite. For 12 years, I lived within two blocks of that property. There's... I appreciate John talking with me earlier tonight. He did agree that there would be no hourly rentals. That's been a neighborhood that's traditionally had those kind of problems, without me going into the details. And so, I appreciate that they would add that to it. I'd like to present this to the clerk. It's the same thing that he did along with the other... Along with the other ones. Thank you so much, and we do support his new project.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other members of the public wish to be heard on these items? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and open this for discussion. Commissioner Cherry?
Through the chair. It's a project I will be supporting. I think it's consistent with where the area is and where it's going. The only question I have is, do we even have anything right now that allows a one-hour rental? I mean, is that even through licensing?
Mr. Chairman, no. Licensing does not allow hourly rentals.
Okay. Thank you for that clarity. And so, I don't feel we need... Have a need for the condition, knowing that we can't even allow it. So... But it is good that it's on the record that it can't be allowed. Thank you for the clarity. I am prepared to make a motion if there's no other discussion.
Commissioner Trowbridge?
Thank you, sir. Just a point of clarification. Anybody who wants to field it can. I'm missing the business concept here where you have a seven-unit, single-room occupancy with common, shared kitchen area as well as 16-unit trailer campground. How do we... Are these... Can I take my 1958 Winnebago and park it down there and just camp out? Is that what the intent is for the area?
If I may. No, we will be providing the air streams that will go there. So, they are... They will be on-site, and they will operate as a residence. So, we won't be bringing in other...
You're not bringing in your own equipment. You're using the standardized stuff. And how do the single-room occupancy element of the project work?
So, again, those are also residences for rent. And they're short... They all... All the air streams and those single-room occupancies, they all will use those sort of community amenities, the co-working lounge, the community kitchen, and such. And it's also perhaps worth noting that the single-room occupancy residence on the ground floor is ADA accessible. And a lot of theirs upstairs as well.
Is the intent that all of these units, be they the single-room or the RV units, are they for short-term rental only, or are people going to take up permanent residency?
Well, I guess that would depend on your interpretation of permanent, but they are sort of long-term, longer-term rentals.
Thank you.
I think this is a novel idea, and I love it. Hope it works, and you'll see my support on this.
Through the chair, if I may, I'd like to make a motion. Item number 35, SUP 66829, I make a motion to follow staff's approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you.
I was happy to learn there's no hourly rentals allowed either.
Motion carries, noting the abstention of the vice chair.
Item number 36, SUP 66831, I'd make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all staff's conditions.
Thank you. Please vote. Again, the motion carries with the abstention.
Item number 37, SDR 66832, make a motion for approval, subject to all staff's conditions.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, items number 35, 36, and 37 are final action this evening unless there is an appeal made to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you. Normally, we would break now since we've been going two hours, but with only two items left on the public hearing, I'd like to push through if everyone agrees. All right. So, item 39 is SUP 66838. The applicant is Kai's Lash and Foot Spa. The owner is West Sahara Associates. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 1,350-square-foot massage establishment with a waiver to allow a distance separation of 80 feet from a residential use where 400 feet is the minimum distance required. At 6340 West Sahara Avenue in Ward I, staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing a massage establishment on a location that does not meet the minimum separation requirement from a protected residential use. As a result, staff has determined that the proposed massage use is not compatible with adjacent uses in the surrounding area and is recommending denial. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Good evening.
Hi. My name's Chanel Baker, 6485 Arberry Hall Court, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89130. I'm co-owner.
It's Aline Sayavong, 2016 Orchard Valley Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89142.
So, what we're... Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, what we're trying to do is a modern lash foot spa. So, I have some pictures that I want to show you just so you can kind of get the idea. Oh, you can't really see that at all. Never.
We can. They'll zoom in on it. Go ahead and leave it.
Oh, okay. So, that's what we're looking to have as the front area for our lashes. And then the back would be like this. So, collectively, me and Linda have over 33 years of experience as massage therapists. We work in the spa resort field on the strip. We're also mothers, so we're trying to go out on our own. We have over 10 years of skincare experience. I'm also into CAM, which is complimentary and alternative medicine. So, this is all things that we want to incorporate here with a modern feel. We want to do lash extensions where they have the ability to receive a foot massage and a hand massage while receiving the eyelash extensions. But if we have patrons that don't want lash extensions, obviously, because that's not for everyone, we also will be providing therapeutic services such as aromatherapy, cupping, reflexology, gua sha, and Shiatsu. And we also want to sell herbs, natural supplements, essential oils, beauty care supplies for your lashes. We also... Which isn't in the justification letter that you have, but we also are planning to do eyebrow threading, eyelash lifting, and microblading, which is semi-permanent eyebrows.
Okay. Anything else?
No, but I'm open to answer any questions that you have.
All right. Thank you. Items 39 has been noticed for public hearing. If anyone wishes to be heard on this item, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment, and we can discuss this as a planning commission. There really wasn't much in this for me by way of lashes or foot massage, but the eyebrow threading, I'm in. So, glad you're offering that. Vice Chair?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I mean, this is one of the establishments.
Mr. Chairman, I, I mean, this is one of the establishments, and if you look at the, the floor plans, it, it's big, open rooms. It's not individual, private rooms, and, you know, even though it's 80 feet away from residential, it's more than 80 feet away from residential, if I'm looking at the right, yeah, it's more than 80 feet, because, you know, they're on the opposite side of the shopping center from where the residential is. So I don't have a problem supporting this item.
Commissioner Trowbridge?
Thank you. I was asked by Commissioner Quinn, because this is in her district, to go by and take a look at this particular facility. And I, there's nothing that's been done to the, to the unit as yet, but the windows are open, so you can see what, what is in there. It's very clearly marked that it's for foot massage. It's not a massage parlor by any stretch of imagination. I, it's new services that are being offered, and I'm in full support of it after checking it out, have no concerns with the residency. It's, you'd have to go the long way around, and it's way more than 400 feet, so I'm going to, I'm going to support it. And if you're ready for a motion, I'm ready to make it. So in, in regards to item number 39, which is a special use permit, 66838, I'd make a recommendation for approval, subject to all staff, if approved, conditions.
Thank you. Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number 39 will be heard by the City Council on December 21st, 2016.
So does that mean we come back? Okay.
It does.
Just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. To item 40, MSP 66826, the applicant owner is WMCV Phase 1 LLC at Owl. For possible action on our request for a major amendment to a previously approved master sign plan, MSP 6344, to add two on-premise wall signs on Building A, to add six on-premise wall signs on the parking garage, and to change the location of two existing illuminated on-premise wall signs on Building B within an existing commercial development with waivers of the downtown Centennial Plan Parkway Center signage standards at 455, 475, and 495 South Grand Central Parkway in Ward 5. Staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this is the Seventh Amendment to the Master Sign Plan originally approved in 2005. The request includes the addition of allowable signs on the east elevation of the garage from 5 to 10. Typically, the signs are installed approximately two weeks before a trade show begins and are removed one week following a trade show. Additionally, the request amends the entitled and not currently installed LED signs F and K on Building B. The amendment would decrease them in size from 18,000 square feet and 14,400 feet to 8,400 square feet for each, and move them to the corner of their respective facade to create an LED illuminated corner display. Finally, the sign J on the northern elevation of Building A would be replaced by two building wrap signs, increasing sign area from 7,950 square feet to 38,858 square feet. Staff supports the proposed amendment to the Master Sign Plan, as the proposed changes match the size and design of the previously approved signs, and the signs are appropriate for the scale of the buildings and are compatible with the surrounding land uses. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you. Carrie Kramer, on behalf of the applicant, 3773 Howard Hughes Parkway. We, this is kind of an open and shut for us. We recommend, or we would like to thank staff for their recommendation of approval, and are happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Okay. Thank you. Item 40 has been noticed for public hearing. Is anyone here to be heard either for or against this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and open this for discussion on the planning commission. And let me start by asking a question. Is there any limitation on when these signs can be displayed? In other words, is it limited to during trade shows, or would we expect to see signs all year round?
Currently, it's not limited. However, also currently, the applicant only puts the, or the signs up during their trade shows. They're generally up for a couple of weeks before, during the markets, and then they're down usually afterward. There's no requirement that they take them down, however, that's generally how they do it at this point.
So... Well, I, I guess I'm just thinking out loud here whether we would, whether there would be any benefit to asking for a condition to limit the display, and I wouldn't mind going, you know, a few weeks before, and even a, you know, a week or two after the trade show, but I wouldn't, I'm trying to imagine what other types of signs may be displayed throughout the year if, if the applicant chose to, to do that.
The applicant would only display signs with events that are currently happening within the World Market Center. As they are, as a condition of approval, they have, are only allowed on-premise signage. Therefore, it would only be an event that is happening with a licensed tenant or someone who's on a long-term lease within the market center.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
That may be a little tough to enforce, just because I don't think we know when the dates of the trade shows would be, and then trying to figure out the two-week period before or after, that'd be a little bit tough to, to enforce.
Well, I think with the applicant's clarification just now, I'm satisfied that the condition's in place that, that satisfies my question. Therefore, I think you'll, well, you will see my support on this.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Through the chair, I'd like to make a motion on item number 40, MSP 66826, follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Please vote. Motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, item number 40 is final action this evening unless an appeal is made to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you. We are now to the citizens' participation portion of the agenda. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of any, of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Does anyone wish to be heard? Seeing none, I will close the public, or the citizens' participation, public comment, and see if there's any comments by planning commissioners. Seeing none, meeting is adjourned.